To order. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Protem Glover. Mayor Connolly. And Mayor Connolly has informed us that he will not be attending tonight's meeting. Mayor Protem Glover.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield. And Councilmember Litchfield has informed us that he will not be attending tonight's meeting. Mayor Protem. Um, Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I am here.
Okay. Mayor Protem Glover, we have a quorum.
All right. Um, Madam Manager, new business? I can't hear you.
She's on mute.
I forgot to unmute. Okay. Got to do it. So, Mayor Protem, we have, um, no changes to the, um, to the agenda for the workshop.
Okay. All righty.
So... So, Mayor Protem, I would just ask Council, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, yes. Motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, so moves.
Second.
Okay.
All right. Roll call.
Okay. Mayor Protem, so that was a motion made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, seconded by Councilmember Bell. And I will do the roll call vote. Mayor Protem Glover. Here. Is that an affirmative? Aye?
Oh, here. You didn't hear me? Uh-oh. Did my sound go down?
Okay. Yep. No, I can hear you. Is that a aye, Mayor Protem Glover?
Yes, aye.
All right. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor Protem. Five zero.
All right. I'll turn the meeting over to, uh, Manager Wall.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Glover. So, the first item on tonight's workshop is a presentation on the status of the 2021 municipal election. I will turn that over to City Attorney Emmanuel McGirt for the presentation. Mr. McGirt?
Uh, thank you, Madam Manager. Uh, Council, I want to do a presentation on the status report regarding the 2021 municipal election. Let's see if I can share my screen here. Um... Okay. Can, can everyone see that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, um, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers, the, uh, in Greenville, the municipal election occurs every two years. Uh, 2021 is an election year. So, what's new about this election year is that this is the, an election immediately after the 2020 census. Um, special rules for redistricting, um, apply to the next election after each federal decennial census. Decennial is just a fancy word for every 10 years. So, every, every year after a census, the council election after a census, council has to, uh, consider redistricting. Uh, Greenville has true electoral districts. Uh, I think it's approximately 45 cities, uh, in North Carolina that have true electoral districts. Uh, so council has to consider the, the census data and consider revising the council boundaries. Uh, and why do you have to do that? Well, it's a constitutional requirement that, uh, one person, one vote, that the districts have to be equally balanced. Um, so every voter's, uh, vote can have equal weight. Uh, that's pursuant to the federal constitution, equal protection clause, and also the state constitution. The districts, they don't have to be exactly equal, but they have to be, uh, close, uh, in size. There's a 5% deviation. So, the, once the census data comes in, the council, uh, would take the, the population of, the new population in Greenville and divide it by the five, uh, districts. And that number would be the ideal, uh, population for a council district. And all the other districts have to have a 5% deviation plus or five deviation minus or somewhere in that range. Um... Uh, so state law, um, pursuant to, is General Statute 168, 23.1, council has a duty upon receipt of the census data every 10 years and before the next election to consider redistricting or revising the, the district boundaries if required by law. Uh, in 2010, after the census data, this council had to revise the district boundaries. The problem this year is that it's a delayed census, um, data. Uh, the projected date that the, the city will receive the data is September 30th. Usually, the data is received in March, uh, after the federal census. And, and the census data will arrive after the filing period. As, as you, as you may know, the filing period for council elections, I believe, is July 26 through August 13th. So, the census data is projected to arrive after the filing period. Um, this right here gives you just a, a, a visual of the five districts and the, and the boundaries of those districts. Um, and here is a chart, is a chart, um, where you can see, if you look here where my cursor is, the usual census data arrives somewhere in March after the federal census. Uh, the filing period, as we just talked about, for the council elections is July, uh, 26 through August the 13th, I believe. The Board of Elections, it has a processing time of about one month. Typically, when, when a coun, when a council receives this, uh, census data, it has about a 12-week period, you see here in pink, to do the redistricting, have public hearings, receive public comment. Um, but the problem here is that the data is not going to arrive until September. Um, so, it, it, we're not going to be able to comply with this normal timeline. Uh, so, the recommendation, there are several options. Well, first of all, one of the big things that is that, uh, the City Attorney's Office plans to bring an agenda item to council sometime in the near future, hiring, hiring a consultant. And that would be an election law firm, a, a law firm that specializes in election law and a demographer, fancy word for person who, who takes the census data and draws maps to make sure that you're in compliance with the law. We, we plan to bring an agenda item, uh, recommending the council hire a consultant, and that was also done in 2010, uh, 2011 after the census. But the options here, so since we're going to receive the data, what's the status of municipal elections? Well, I think council has several options. Um, the scuttlebutt amongst city attorneys and, uh, in municipal classes has been that, that the General Assembly will take action, but it hasn't happened yet. But I think one, one option is that wait and see if the General App, General Assembly, uh, passes a statewide law and delays the election. Um, the second action is a local act. That's a, I'm not, I'm all, I'm only aware of one city, a smaller city, uh, that I'm aware of in North Carolina that has asked their local delegation to pursue a local act. So, there's no statewide law right now. Uh, very few municipalities have tried to get a local act to address this issue. But the other option, and this is a recommendation from the school of government, and I, I, I concur with this, is, is if the General Assembly fails to take action, council should continue on its regular schedule, uh, using the old districts. There is a statute that allows council to delay a municipal election if it has census data and it doesn't have time to draw the districts to make sure that they're balanced, but it just doesn't have time to meet the timeframe, if we, if we went back to that chart. But that statute doesn't apply because the city does not have any data. So, I'm of the view that the, the statute that allows cities to continue, um, an election to, to give it time to redraw the districts does not apply in this case. That's also the opinion of the school of government. So, anyway, it's probably a lot of information, um, and I'm available for any questions.
Um, this is Councilman Smiley.
Yeah. Yes, Councilmember.
Yeah. Um, so, your guidance is that if the, in the absence of action by the state, um, and not having the, um, so let me back up. If we don't have the data in hand, then we can't take advantage of any law that allows, you know, addition, you know, independently allows the city to delay, um, an, an election until we can redo this, the data, until we can read, you know, we, we set the districts. Because we, that only applies if you have the data, and you and the school of government believe that in the, not having the data, that is not an option that's available to us.
That's correct.
So, then, in, so then we have, in the absence of action by the state, it seems like we have no real, um, no real option but to proceed with the election as it, you know, under the current sta, um, situation. Uh, which, you know, would certainly be my preference. Um, you know, people elected us for two years and they expect to be able to reelect us or unelect us or whatever they're going to do, uh, in this November. So, you know, my instinct would be to, unless the state, you know, gives, you know, provides another alternative for us to simply proceed, you know, under the law and, you know, do the best we can, right?
That, that's my advice. I mean, it's the middle road. Is, this would still take the General Assembly action. Uh, there was, there's been talk lately about a local act, and that would take council asking, uh, the, the, the local delegation, the state representatives that represent the areas that cover the city of Greenville, to, to ask the General Assembly to pass some type of local act, which is, I'm not aware of, I'm only aware of one, of one jurisdiction that is taking that.
May I? Go ahead.
I was just saying that the General Assembly is certainly aware of the circumstances we're in. We don't need to, I don't think a local act is required to apprise them of the challenge.
Do you have any idea of when we may hear anything, um, from the state at all? Has there been any talk? From them?
I'm just, uh, what I've heard, and this is, I've heard that they may take action toward the end of, of the session. I, I think that's, uh, by no means an expert on General Assembly matters, but I think that that may be, may be ending in, 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 at the end of June, from what I recall. But, don't, don't take that to the bank. But I, I, what I've heard is they may take action toward the end of the session if they take action, if the General Assembly takes action.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or a comment?
I have one more question.
Okay.
So, what is the, so what timeline are we really operating under? I mean, when would we have to act? The, the filing period would open in July. We don't have to take action in order to make that happen, correct?
Correct. If there's no action by the General Assembly, state law allows local municipalities and including the city of Greenville, in this instance, we have a true electoral district. The filing period statute provides is, would stand, which is July 26 through August 13th. So, elections would go on as usual using the old districts.
So, if the act, unless the General Assembly acts, then we don't have to do anything and we can, and the election will proceed as normal. If we wanted it to not proceed as normal, then we'd have to take advantage of one of the options you have presented.
Correct. Some, some type of legislation from the General Assembly. Thank you.
Um... We have had, um, during our elections, usually, when we have had census, I think I've been through like a couple, um, District One and District Two has been most off-balance than any of them. And so, I worry that, um, until we get the census data, we're not going to know how off-balance we are because, uh, you know, we have to bring in quite a few people in to this, um, into our districts because of it being so off-balance. You know, the flood, a lot of people left the area. Um, and then we had the, the other th, flood, and the people who were sick, came back to the area, uh, left the area. So... I like to have our, um, the person, the census, uh, attorney, um, to work with us on, on this because... I don't think that it would be fair if our, um, districts are off as much as they usually are, and I've been through two, um, census. So, um, I don't think it would be fair for District One and District Two, um, to, to actually run an election without knowing our numbers and if they're up or down. And normally, they are down. So, I mean, it's up, uh, I mean, it, it, the majority has to say so, but I think in all fair, uh, fairness, we need to know what District One and District Two is going to look like, and that's sort of been a guiding principle forever with, um, with, well, Dave and our attorney forever, to, to make sure that those districts are, um, you know, equitable.
This is Councilman Smiley, and I'm, I'm very sensitive to that. I, I think that it's very important that, you know, we have as, you know, that everybody get, everybody in the city get equal representation. And I'm, I've certainly, I've talked to people in the General Assembly and, you know, I've tried representing it here and said, would they please give us guidance here? But I would have, we have a lot of trouble voting to extend my term. Um, because that's basically when we pursue, when we put off the election, we're basically saying, we, we are going to allow ourselves to remain in our, in our positions beyond that, the period we were elected for. And I'm not, I'm very nervous about doing that. I would prefer to go ahead and have the election. Um, if, it sounds like if you're concerned with that, that you're, that District One and Two would lose population, then the people there would actually become overrepresented. You know, their votes would count more than if, than the districts that got bigger. So, the, 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 that would be...
I don't know. Ours would not be overrepresented. I know that.
No, I'm just saying that if there are fewer people in, in a certain district, that they still get to elect a single councilman or councilwoman, then the people in that district are getting a larger vote than if there are people in a, in another district that have more people. Uh, it's a technical thing, but I, I don't think that the, the people are being, aren't being harmed in that area, uh, by an election, even if it did turn out after the fact to, that those districts had become smaller.
But I, I tend to agree that, you know, a smaller district with less voters would, would, under the, the, the court decisions would have, those, those voters would have actually more, uh, power than, than a larger district if they're outside of that deviation. So, that's the purpose of making the, the districts balanced, so each person's vote will be proportionate. But again, the, the recommendation here is that to see if the state will take action. Um, I don't think that the city has authority under the applicable statute to extend the election because, simply because this, the city does not have census data. School of Government is in agreement with that. Um, and to the extent that we can, um, engage a, a firm, uh, an election law firm to take a look at that, we can see what they say about that as well. But I, the, the, the advice seems to be that cities don't have authority to extend the election. That's, that's in the, in the main. There may be some exceptions to that. That seems to be the general advice. Uh, from my reading of the statute, that's, that's my advice.
So, um, City Attorney McGirt, are you looking for some direction from the council?
Oh, no. It's, the purpose of here was to give an update and to let council know that we plan to, to bring back an agenda item sooner than later, uh, making a recommendation regarding a, a consultant, um, to help us with the, with this process, with redistricting.
This is Councilmember Meyerhofer. To be clear though, so, will we have a formal vote on this, or if, if, if nothing happens, then we will proceed as per the norm and we'll file in July and we'll have elections this year?
As of right now, yes. That's, that's.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I just personally think that's the right thing to do. I, I don't think I can in good faith, uh, vote to change the, the process and give ourselves another year in there. I, I think we should stick with the, uh, with the election and, unless we're told otherwise. Thank you.
So, again, it's just a status report and no action needs to be taken.
So, Mayor Protem, unless there are any more, uh, any additional questions from the council, we can move to the next item.
All right. We'll move to the next items.
Great. So, the next item is a presentation on the Stormwater Utility Plan Overview, and, um, Financial Services Director Byron Hayes will provide that presentation. Byron?
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Protem and Council. Um, I'll share my screen really quickly. All right. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, all right. Uh, this is going to be a brief overview of the Stormwater Utility Plan in preparation for the, uh, the budget preview tonight. Um... Uh, just a bit of background. Uh, council originally adopted the Stormwater Utility Plan in April of 2019, uh, funded a $1 per year increase, uh, in the ERU rate for a four-year period. Um, the increase would fund increased preventative maintenance in the stormwater system as well as funding, uh, stormwater, uh, infrastructure improvements through a combination of projects funded with cash and projects funded with debt. Uh, the plan was originally scheduled to begin during this current fiscal year. Uh, however, it was delayed due to, um, unforeseen circumstances related to COVID-19. Um, and as a result, the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget, uh, will include the implementation of the funding plan. Uh, just going over the parameters really quickly, uh, comparing the current plan to the proposed plan, uh, sees a $4 increase per ERU over the next five years, uh, which allows for additional debt financing to fund capital projects and the ability to use, uh, some of the fund's current cash reserves, uh, during the initial years of implementation. Uh, the rate would increase from the current $5.35 per ERU to $9.35, uh, cents per ERU by 2025, uh, as well as an additional 50 cents, uh, per ERU in year 2031, uh, bringing the rate to $9.85, uh, per ERU in the next 10 years. Uh, by the fifth year of the plan, uh, residential tier-two customers, which is the majority of, of homeowners within the city, uh, and the largest customer base for the stormwater, uh, uh, system, would see their, their stormwater bill increase from $10.70 to $18.70 during this timeframe. And, uh, to go over a little bit of the initiatives, um, we'll start with preventative maintenance. Uh, this plan would increase new infrastructure inspection, uh, from 10% per year to 50% uh, uh, per year, and cut the public channel and catch basin, uh, cleaning frequencies in half. Uh, it will also provide, uh, utility audits, maintenance repairs, and condition specimens, uh, within. Uh, the plan originally, uh, provided 17 new stormwater positions, um, and so forth. Six of those positions have been filled, uh, with recruitment ongoing for the remaining positions. Uh, the plan also included additional equipment that was to be purchased, uh, in, in preparation for the plan, and as of today, all that equipment has been purchased and received by the city. Uh, capital project funding would be split into three-year phases, uh, providing up to $14 million in debt financing in each phase, uh, as well as an average yearly, uh, allocation of over $1.5 million for projects funded with cash. Um, about $15 million worth of projects were identified for the first phase, uh, including storm, uh, stor, storm drainage construction, uh, at South Elm Street, Cedar Lane, and Greenbrier. Um, and to quickly recap the planned funding, uh, we have a $4.50 increase per ERU over the next 10 years, uh, which provides roughly a $116 million in capital projects and preventative maintenance over the next 10 years, uh, funded with a combination of cash and, and revenue bonds. Uh, during this 10-year period, we do see the, uh, stormwater cash reserves increase, uh, approximately $500,000 from the current level, um, or approximately $2.3 million from the implementation of the first year of the plan. And again, we, uh, see roughly, uh, $70 million worth of additional investment into the stormwater system by the city of Greenville under this proposed plan. And just to summarize, uh, the plan will see an increase in, in frequency and volume of preventative maintenance, system inspections, and capital projects, and will fund, uh, roughly $116 million worth of stormwater initiative over the next 10 years. Uh, so I know I ran through that pretty quickly, but any questions?
So, um, just to recap for Mr. Hayes, the, um, we wanted to provide this update to the council, to, um, remind the council of, um, of what was agreed to back in 2019 with the Stormwater Utility Plan. This information is, will be baked into the budget, and you'll receive the budget presentation at your six o'clock council meeting. But we are happy to, Michael and I, or Byron, are happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Okay? And Mayor Protem, without any questions, we're happy to move to the next item.
Okay. Madam Manager?
Thank you. The third item we will do will be an overview of state and local fiscal recovery funding included in the American Rescue Plan, and Assistant City Manager, CFO Michael Cowan, will provide that presentation. Mr. Cowan? Michael, you're on mute. There we go.
There we go. Good evening. Good afternoon. I'm Mayor Protem and City Council. Would I like to take a few minutes to review the projected funding to the city through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, and also discuss potential, uh, next steps moving forward? But before we get started, would like to take a quick trip in our little plane here halfway across the United States to the beautiful city of San Antonio, Texas. San Antonio, the second-largest city in the state of...
To the Bahamas? The Bahamas is on that map.
That's...
Come there and you just decided on San Antonio?
That's, we're going to the Bahamas tonight in the budget presentation.
Okay.
So, there's a specific reason why we're focusing on San Antonio?
So, uh, Plano, Antonio, the second-largest city in the state of Texas and the state's oldest municipality. It was founded in 1718 with a deep Spanish-American history and is home to the city's famous Riverwalk. The Riverwalk is a park built along the San Antonio River that runs through the city, and the home is, uh, the, the park is home to an abundance of restaurants and shopping, sightseeing, canoeing, and kayaking, boat rides, and even exercising. Along with the Alamo, the Riverwalk is one of the most iconic images of the city of San Antonio. That being said, did you know that the Riverwalk is the number-one attraction in the state of Texas for tourists and locals? It stretches 15 miles through San Antonio and serves as the city's primary stormwater drainage system. And believe it or not, the city hasn't, uh, the, the Riverwalk has an estimated $3.5 billion economic impact on the city. Doesn't stop there. But did you also know that the Riverwalk was constructed in 1939 with funding included in the New Deal Fatal Program, which was the program that helped lift the United States out of the Great Depression through an investment in major infrastructure and capital projects that created millions of jobs? In short, the impact of the Riverwalk on the economy and quality of life in San Antonio is the direct result of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that came along in the early 1900s that has just brought an unmeasurable amount of value to that region of the country in the last 100 years. Members of council, that is exactly where the city of Greenville and all other local governments across this country find themselves today, facing a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity through funding included in the American Rescue Plan. The value that this funding will bring to our community over the next several generations will depend on the decisions that this council and this leadership team makes over the next few months. So, there really is no pressure, right? This one-time funding that could have a significant impact on the quality of life of not only Greenville residents, but also all of eastern North Carolina. It's just so important for that reason that we carefully craft a spending plan around this funding to ensure that we are building for the future and not just spending for the moment. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Now, I know that this has just got your blood pumping and you're all excited and you're just ready to say, well, what's next? What, what's the catch here? Well, let's, uh, just talk a little bit more about the ARP funding and the next steps. ARP funding for state and local governments totals approximately $350 billion, with local governments totaling approximately $130 billion of that total. The same, the city of Greenville is projected to receive approximately $27.2 million. That is consisted of, uh, local economic recovery funding, an amount of $24.6 million, home funding of approximately $2 million, and transit funding of $600,000. Now, this funding will be released in two installments. Now, this funding will be released in two installments, with the funding expected, anticipated to be expended by December 31, 2024, per the bill guidelines. And wouldn't you know it, that the guidance from the U.S. Treasury came out about two hours ago, right before this meeting. So we were anticipating it to come out this week, but it tried to beat us to the punch by coming out right before the meeting. I think Ann had told me that from what she saw, that the guidance was about 151 pages long, and probably another good 30 or 40 pages of documentation answering questions and other guidance. So we are all just anxious. I want to be able to sleep tonight, because I'm trying to hurry up and get to work tomorrow morning with my Mountain Dew and sit down and read through this. But basically, what we had prior to today, based on the information that had been delivered to us, was the actual information in the adopted bill. And that bill basically stated that the funding was intended to stimulate economic recovery by addressing revenue loss due to the pandemic, covering costs incurred responding to the pandemic, and providing premium pay to essential workers responding to the pandemic, and also investing in infrastructure such as water, sewer, and broadband. Now, to this point, the language in the adopted bill was very vague and open to interpretation, as many of us that have been looking at this information very closely over the last couple of months have seen. The best that we saw was information that had been provided before today on the North Carolina League of Municipalities website. The league had basically set up a whole separate part of its website devoted just to the ARP funding and the allowable uses, as included within the bill. I'll just spend just a few minutes going through what that information summarized to be. Basically, it said that the funding could be used to respond to COVID-19's emergency and address the economic impact of the pandemic, including through aid to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and industries such as tourism and hospitality. Let me just say, this one area right here, there's a lot of information here. There's a lot of detail that we need to look very closely into just this one allowable use, based off the language that was in the bill. So the funding could be used to provide premium pay to essential employees that worked that through the pandemic and respond to the pandemic, or grants to their employers. And it noted that the pay could not exceed $13 per hour or $25,000 per worker. The funding could be used to provide government services affected by the revenue reduction resulting from COVID-19. In other words, the funding could be used to offset revenue reductions that were directly due to the pandemic. And it said that the funding could be used to invest in water, sewer, and broadband, as already stated. And finally, the guidance on the league's website basically stated that state and local governments could not use the funds towards pensions or to offset revenue resulting from tax cuts enacted since March 3 of 2021. Now, again, this language was vague and broad in nature, based off of what was in the bill, and we can't wait to get hold of the actual guidance tomorrow and start picking it apart. But there is one thing for certain, as we've already stated, that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to build for the future. No matter how this funding was derived, what type of legislation has brought it about, regardless of that, this funding will be deposited with the city. It is our obligation to put this funding to good use for not only the current benefit of our community, but the long-term benefit of our community. So with that said, staff proposes the development of a city stimulus use plan. That stimulus use plan would be based off of five core guiding principles. Those guiding principles would be to build a high-performing, diverse organization, expand the economic hub of eastern North Carolina, deliver public infrastructure improvements, build a thriving and attractive community, and enhance community engagement, safety, and wellness. Now, these five core guiding principles just happen to be the city council's adopted strategic goals. Staff would look first to these adopted goals when creating a stimulus plan for council's consideration. We would also look at the spending guidance from the U.S. Treasury to ensure that we are in no means misappropriating any funds that would require a payback situation, as well as input from the city's contracted legislative support agencies, such as Ferguson, as well as Lord and Smith. We would propose presenting this to council for consideration and adoption in the fall of 2021, and this is a proposed calendar moving forward, which actually starts here tonight and moving forward over the next few months. In May and June, we would bring to council for consideration and adoption the 2021-22 proposed budget that would exclude the stimulus funding. The proposed budget adoption process is part of the city's annual operations, and what we would propose is just maintaining the current schedule that we've got, considering the current budget that's before us, getting that out of the way, and putting the budget into operation at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then setting our attention over the next few months, developing that stimulus use plan that we would start in June and July, looking at the U.S. Treasury guidelines under the umbrella of the city's core guiding principles, those approved strategic goals and priorities established by council, then bringing that back to council in August for consideration and comment, and finally, back to council in September of 2021 for adoption, and then moving that forward beginning in October of 2021. This is a very structured and methodical plan for utilizing funding that will only come along once in a lifetime. And an accountant who shall remain anonymous once said, "When opportunity knocks on your door, you get up and answer, or that opportunity will just move on to the next door." And if you look at this funding and this opportunity objectively, every local government in this whole entire country is playing on a level playing field at this point in time. Each local government has been provided funding through the ARP. Now, that is either up or down based on the size of that community, but each local government has been provided funding through the ARP, and they will be playing by the same rulebook. The rules and the guidance applicable to the city of Greenville will be the same as that applicable to New York City. The only difference between the local governments is how they intend to utilize this funding for the best long-term interest of their community. The opportunity is knocking on our door with this funding, that we can take a long-term look at building a stronger tomorrow instead of just spending for today. That's why staff proposes that we would take the next few months, based off city council's goals and priorities, those core guiding principles, and in relation to the guidance from the U.S. Treasury, and put together a spending plan that builds for tomorrow, that provides a long-term benefit to our community, and we would bring that back to council in the next few months with adoption in October, proposed for October. That is the most fiscally representative way to move forward at this point in time. So with that, I would turn it back over to council, and the city manager and myself would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, this is Councilmember Meyerhofer. I'd actually emailed the city, or texted the city manager, what was that, a few days ago? So I'm looking forward to hear what strings are attached and how we can apply this. So get to reading. You have some light reading tonight there, Michael.
It's an a lifetime opportunity, guys. This is something that's very special. This doesn't come along every day. We do have an obligation to our community to make sure that we are being as smart, fiscally as smart as we possibly can with the long-term benefit that this can bring about for our community. And just think, we are the ones to get to do it. That's what's awesome. It's a great opportunity for this council and for this staff to move it forward.
For this community, and this community.
Yes.
Michael, I appreciate you laying out such a high vision, and I pray we live up to it. Thank you.
I got so excited. I thought you were telling us to build a Riverwalk. I was like, this is happening. I love it.
Hey, you never know, Will.
We got the, we know how to walk. You sparked my interest there. I did a quick Google while you were presenting, and it's crazy to see the change in cost for a project like that. It was $430,000 to build that in 1929, and I'm scared to know what that number would look like in today's, you know.
At least $30 million, bros, right?
And just like Michael said, what our goal is to really, to look at these dollars, to understand how they can be used, and to really create a project that is impactful for many, many, many years to come. Or projects.
It's exciting to think about.
It is. Okay. Any other questions? Mayor Protem, would you like me to move to the next item?
Yes, please.
Great. The next item is a presentation on Hunden's recommendations regarding the 500-foot rule. Tom Barnett, Director of Financial Services, sorry, Tom, Director of Planning and Development Services, has that presentation. What we wanted to do with the council, I'm just going to tee it up just a little bit, Tom, is what we heard from the council is the council was interested in having a holistic approach to any changes related to this rule. Tom's going to remind you of those recommendations and talk to you a little bit of some progress that we've made and some progress to come. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you, Ann. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. So I'm going to share my screen, and while I'm doing that, I will tell you that I was born and raised in San Antonio. I wasn't there at the beginning of it, but some people might think so. So here we go. One more. There we go. Okay. So again, this is the follow-up from Hunden's, the consultant's presentation on the 500-foot rule. As Ann said, we are trying to take a holistic approach to downtown as we look at all these things. I'm going to show you the 10 original recommendations. We've added one, and you'll see what that is, and then we'll tell you what we're working on, what we would look to them to work on, and then what our first steps might be as we bring this to you. So a reminder that one of their main takeaways was that our 500-foot rule was probably having unintended consequences and turning away the kind of investment that we do want. It's actually inhibiting the business we would welcome and seek to attract downtown. That's what their thoughts were. These are the 10 initial recommendations. Those with asterisks are ones the city has begun working on, and those without are the ones we'll be looking to Hunden for. So evaluating our city incentives, what are we doing with landscaping, public art, creation of a downtown development authority, increased programming downtown, meaning events and things going on, public-private partnership and commercial development, offer an array of development incentives, rental assistance, grants, those kinds of things, engage police, fire, ECU to increase security, conduct random spot checks on our downtown situation, perhaps create a nighttime mayor or really a czar position, change entry to all bars to 21 years of age, and then 11 is what we've kind of, the culmination is the changes and how we would be affected by those changes to a 500-foot rule. So just quickly, the initial recommendation, one, these are a list of our current business incentives. You know those better than I do. Public art and infrastructure improvements, you know, as you know, we're working on lots of things, but two that come to mind are the Emerald Loop, as well as our Art Trail and the Down East Sculpture Exhibition that we have going on and are always adding to. The bill grant, as you know, is coming and will be making serious and really nice changes to Fifth Street. These are some of the things that will happen, the crosswalks, the improved pedestrian lighting, the mast arms, brick borders, all these things. I think you're well aware of those. Event programming in our downtown uptown area, we have developed a central event process with an events coordinator, and the news is, I think the main point here is, there's lots going on, and there's a lot more coming, a lot more being planned. As far as security incentives, ECU and Greenville Police coordinate their policing efforts in uptown. The Fire Marshal conducts annual reviews. We have an ambassador program that is starting back up. We provide, through the Police Department, bouncer training to bar nightclub operators, and then talking about medians to reduce lane width slowing traffic and modified lighting. One of the ideas about a nighttime czar, these are some of the cities we've talked to who have something like this. The most interesting points, I think, are most of those are city employees. They meet regularly, they're downtown during the nighttime events, their duties are to evaluate and influence, promote special events, and essentially effective lines of communication to try to improve and keep things very positive. And then, one of the things that we were asked to do, you may remember, somebody got up and asked, talked about some of the cities around us and what they were doing. I wanted to kind of dive into that with you just briefly. We had discussions with a couple of cities. Jacksonville, North Carolina, talked with the senior planner Jeremy Smith. He said they no longer have issues with their bars in their community. They require a special use permit that has $1,200 non-refundable fee, for starters. New development, including a bar, if a bar were to come in with an SUP, they would be required to make certain streetscape improvements, such as installing the sidewalk in front of their building at their expense, or else provide a fee in lieu of that amount, and they've adopted a minimal commercial code which the structures there must meet. And Wilson talked to Janet Holland, the Land Development Manager, very interesting story. They had lots of crime shootings and problems in the early 80s or late 80s, early 90s. They essentially outlawed all bars, clubs, et cetera. The area went dormant for about 25 years. They took it back up in 2013 with their Unified Development Ordinance, and now they have SUPs that allow bars, but they have a two- or a three-year expiration date that must, so the SUP has to be brought back and looked at again. Once they expire, if they are denied or expired, their permits and their alcohol license is revoked. These revocations occur based on negative activity attributed to the bar. For example, ALE infractions, criminal activity around the bar, parking issues, public works, cleanup, or other issues considered significant by BOA. They also charge a privileged license fee for beer, wine, alcohol, or taxi sales. They currently have a 500-foot rule that prohibits bars within 500 feet of a residential school, church, park, playground, or another bar. Every bar has to be at least 1,200 square feet in size or larger. They say now their bar scene is primarily good, and they've been able to attract other things to town, new retail, commercial, and service industry investment. After Horley Gate Park went in, they started seeing that type of investment, and they currently have 125 non-student market rate units downtown that are leased up, and they just received a submittal for an additional 125 units, for a total of 250 residential units in their downtown. And then we took a look at Greensboro, North Carolina, where they began in 2019, they did a strategic plan. They do that once every 10 years, based on the idea that the downtown is an iconic center of a city. They have a number of funding sources, similar to ours, but more. And then here is a bit of an annual report. The incentives, remember, are fairly newly introduced since they began the plan in 2019. They've given out $29,000 in facade grants, $55,000 in revitalization grants. They have $195 million in current construction underway and about half a billion of construction to come, and they've moved 350 new employees into working downtown. So pretty interesting. So back to our consultants' initial recommendations for us. Here are the 10 again. The ones in red are the ones that we would be looking to the consultant to help us with. The ones in black, we are currently working on, and of course, they'd help us with any ideas about those as well. So we are saying that we would like to look to our consultants to begin So we are saying that we would like to look to our consultants to begin helping us with the first, the fifth, and the sixth of these recommendations as a place for them to start to figure out how to attract different businesses to downtown and what that might look like. They would include a deep dive on what we've got, what might be put in place, and we'd be specifically looking at a financial assessment, asking for perhaps some specific projects on transformational types of projects that would include pro forma, what it would cost, where we could find the money, what kind of incentives it would take, and then its impact in the long term for us. So this is what we think we'd start with them on, and we would recommend council, direct staff, to work with the consultant to return with a specific proposal and recommendation to you. And that is the end of the presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions, take any comments.
When did you imagine any address, you know, we would take up the 500-foot rule within the context of that?
Well, everything we're talking about, of course, deals with the 500-foot rule in one form or another. I think, you know, the first piece is to start seeing what kinds of things we could do that would be attractive to new business or new things, not just bars, but other things as well, and then go from there. So I think we'd start seeing effects in the first six months to a year of maybe making some tweaks or changes. It could be done as an overlay, which keeps it in place, but if somebody did agree to certain standards, we could allow them to go in. And others who didn't agree to those standards, the 500-foot rule would still apply.
So if I could just sort of follow up on Councilmember Smiley's question as well. As you can tell from what Mr. Barnett has said, we are already contemplating what potential changes to the 500-foot rule could occur. We do think that we, based on your direction about this holistic view, we think we're going to need to also work on a few of those other recommendations as well and not just go forward only with the 500-foot rule. But we would anticipate that we could begin to do that work and sometime after your July break in late summer, early fall, we could come back with another report and then also talk with you in more in-depth on that 500-foot rule as well.
It sounds like you're crafting an alternative to it, which might involve spatial separation requirements, but only under certain circumstances. Is that, or maybe they're exempt out of that if you meet certain requirements?
Right. But I think the important point to note from that is the staff is already contemplating what some of those potential, based on some guidance and based on some feedback from the council, we're already trying to determine what some of those potential changes could be.
And to keep in mind, the rule applies citywide, so there would definitely have to be differences uptown, downtown versus perhaps the rest of the city.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Mayor Protim, are you ready for the last item?
Yes, I am.
Great. So the final item of the night is a presentation on the public art recommendations for the Fourth Street side of the parking deck, and I think Ms. Holly Gariot is on the phone, and I'll turn it over to Holly for that presentation.
All right. Good afternoon. Let me go ahead and share my screen. So this afternoon, I'll be presenting on the Civic Arts Committee's recommendation for the mural on the Fourth Street side of the parking deck. This was a local or regional request for proposals that we put out several months ago, and we had 15 applications, which is a pretty good amount for a public art project of this size. The selection committee and the Civic Arts Committee's recommendation is to accept the proposal by artists Rakaya Jackson and Kid Graves for a design called "A Great Place to Be Outside." And I want to make a note that Rakaya and Kid are both local Black artists who are very involved with the community. Rakaya is one of our resident artists at the Art Lab, which is our arts and business incubator, and Kid Graves is a master's of fine arts sculpture student in the ECU School of Art and Design. The location is on the Fourth Street side of the parking deck, and if you'll recall, we've just finished the Cotanch side of the parking deck. We'll be doing a virtual dedication for that on Saturday, which all of you will get information about that. It will be virtual because of the size limitations for face-to-face. So this will be on the Fourth Street side where there's two panels. The city liaison for this project is the Public Works Department and specifically Kevin Heffron, who is also our liaison on the Cotanch side. And our stakeholders for this project are the Pitt County Arts Council and the Greenville Mural Group, which is a subcommittee of the Civic Arts Committee. The fiscal impact to the city is $0, and this mural will be funded completely by the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge. This, we will request that this be on the first June city council meeting for approval, and the artists have agreed to get to work right after that approval. So this will be done before the end of this fiscal year in June of 2021. So as you see with the design, the focus of the artists was on our river, and even though this is an abstracted view of the river, it is to really celebrate the amenities and assets of our river and our recreation. Both of the artists do a lot of activities on the river, and they really wanted to accentuate that. So yoga, picnics, kayaking, children, there's a father-and-son fishing, and they also wanted to really accentuate the diversity of our community. So you'll see that the majority of the individuals in this design are community members of color, and that's very important to both of these artists. They also wanted to connect by design the mural bubbles, which is on the Cotanch side of the parking deck. So they intentionally put this child blowing bubbles that carries on visually to the Cotanch side. So I also have what it'll look like imposed on the parking deck, on the Fourth Street side of the parking deck, and this is very important because there are bushes in front of the mural, and the artists actually came back and altered their design a little bit to take into account those bushes there that will remain. And so you can see, it's bright, lively, colorful, and if you think about looking at the Fourth Street side of the parking deck, it's almost a reflection of the river just a few blocks away. And, you know, now with tourism and just our local quality of life, the river and outdoor events are so important to us. So we see this as a wonderful representation of life here in Greenville and just a really positive message. So again, we will be requesting this to be on the agenda for the first June city council meeting.
All right. Are there any questions from the council? Any comments?
Thank you, Holly. Looks great. Thank you.
And Mayor Protim, we will add that item to the June council agenda, and then with that, we have completed the agenda items for the workshop, and the council can adjourn this meeting, and we can reconvene at 6:00.
Okay.
I think you need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? So move.
Seconds.
Second.
Madam Quill?
All right. Sounds like that was a motion made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Bell. I will call the roll call vote. Mayor Protim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor Protim, 5-0.
All righty. Thank you. So we'll adjourn the meeting until 6 o'clock at our city council, regular city council meeting.
Greenville also paid tribute to its past as the Shore Drive neighborhood that once occupied the Greenville Town Common was recognized with the official opening of the Sycamore Hill Gateway Plaza.
For years to come, residents and visitors now have the opportunity to stroll through this Gateway Plaza and learn about the families and businesses that once thrived here and the influence of the Sycamore Hill Missionary Baptist Church had on the community.
And the year ended with an artistic call for social justice as a group of local artists expressed themselves through a "Unite Against Racism"